Good evening. Wanted to call this Elk Grove Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Would you please call the roll?
Trustee Dukes.
Present.
Trustee Lujai.
Present.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Here.
Trustee Stanyek.
Present.
Trustee Winekoop.
Here.
All right, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time for public comments for any item that's not on the agenda. So it's anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review all the bills, including the payroll?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda after having reviewed all the reports and the bills.
Trustee Lujai, seconds.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Winekoop.
Yes, yea.
Trustee Lujai.
Yea.
Trustee Dukes.
Yea.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Yea.
Trustee Stanyek.
Yea.
So while we've approved all of those items, I should have gone through the department reports first. So what I wanted to do was tell you a little bit about the Department of Administrative Services. As all of our departments are, they're quite busy. But we've seen a lot of increased rides on the bus service. And what's great about it is that we're becoming more and more efficient with the Eco Lane, and so people are not waiting as long for us to arrive. And in the event that someone's appointment gets changed, the staff can immediately reroute buses to make sure that people aren't left waiting. And then so it's, I would say that the riders of the bus appear to be much happier. It's also given us an opportunity to make sure that the drivers are getting breaks when needed. Also, passports continue to go up. I would say that as of right now, we're only down six for the past two months versus the same time last year. Traditionally, the summer takes a little bit of a break because everybody got their passport so that they can travel during the summer, but it will definitely pick up again in the fall. We had one of our bus drivers retire after six years of service, Kevin O'Brien. Very thankful for him. And now we're onboarding a new driver, Froilin, and that is complete. We started seeing our first receptionist volunteer, and so we're still trying to fill in some of those shifts, but so far, so good. In the Social Services Department, I think that what you'll see inside the reports is that we've seen an increase in general assistance recipients. So we have lots of people applying for them, but we're up 13 so far this year who've received general assistance. And then you'll notice under CETA, we're right about the same. The one thing I did want to mention, so CETA is the Community of Economic Development Association of Cook County, and they're funded federally. Their budget year begins in October. It's now June, and they've exhausted their budget. So there's lots of people out there in need. So we may see some additional requests for financial assistance because of that. They've assured us that they have the funding to begin again in October. But I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we may see some increased requests for funding because of CETA's budget being exhausted. Food pantry has been very busy. It's pretty interesting. We've had lots of great donations that has been good for our community, including recently lots of cabbage. And so it's a little bit difficult during the summer to go through the cabbage, but we did our very best. And the one thing I wanted to point out is that our volunteer hours, so far in 2020, in this year, it's 1,719 hours versus last year, 1,065. So we are very, very fortunate as a township to have people willing to donate their time to make sure that that food pantry is stocked and people receive the services they need. Adult and family counseling. So we've had some improvements in that department through the hiring of another counselor. I think we mentioned that, I mentioned it last time. We have a new part-time therapist who's also bilingual. He's a family therapist, but he's bilingual, and that's Juan. He's onboarding and began taking clients in the month of May, and so that's one of the reasons why we're going to see an increase in May. And then Carmen Martinez is a full-time bilingual family therapist, and I was very excited to inform everybody, I know the board's already aware of it, but just to let everybody in the township know that she passed the Illinois Licensed Professional Clinical Counselor Exam, which is a tremendous accomplishment that reflects her dedication, skill, and commitment to her work. And so very thankful for Carmen in making that extra time to get her additional licensing. And then finally, I wanted to tell you a little bit about Youth Services. So this month, this past month, in May, we had a record number of participants. We served over 1,000 young people. And there was a brief survey that was done, and 100% of the parents surveyed in May agree that their child is learning helpful social, emotional skills through our programs. And so that's very exciting. And also, the department has collaborated with several community partners to expand outreach efforts, including the Girl Scouts, Mount Prospect Mental Health Event. And so Renee, why don't you tell us a little bit about why we saw this increase in youth serve, this record-breaking increase? If you could step up to the podium?
Thank you.
Renee Dorn, Director of Youth Services.
Thank you. So as you had mentioned, May, I don't know if it's, May was a record-breaking month, and we're really proud of that. We engage over 1,000 youth, and that's a combination of our school-based groups as well as our onsite groups, and that also encompasses the bike safety course, which has really taken off this spring and early summer. I think it's important to note that the number doesn't just reflect the volume, but it goes to show that we have very meaningful connections with each individual, and I think that truly makes an impact, whether we're talking to a teacher about the programs, whether we're working directly with the youth about the programs. I think that's the difference with us and why we're starting to really see an increase. June is not going to be over 1,000, just to, but we're getting up there. Tomorrow, we have, I think, 55 kids scheduled, so.
That's wonderful. The word of mouth, from what I've heard from people throughout the community, is how impressed they are with your department. And we can see that the schools are talking, the teachers, and those administrators, because they're requesting more and more of your services. So thank you for what you do.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think it's helpful to have social media be a presence advertising our open rides, our bike safety courses. We have a nice partnership with Friends of Cycling, and they dedicate their time to help us service the bikes. And in turn, we can then kind of teach the kids, like if your chain goes off, how do you do it? If you need to repair a tire, how do you go about it? So it's kind of a paying it forward approach as well.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Director Dorn?
I do not have a question, but what I wanted to tell you, Renee, just the other day, I was at the park, and the two children were talking how awesome it is to know how to repair a flat tire on a bike. So it definitely, it is working, and it is fun for the kids. So thank you on the behalf of the two children, very happy children in the park and our neighborhoods.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any questions or comments? Can I get a motion for the approval?
Trustee Lujai motions to approve the minutes of May.
Trustee Stanyek, second.
All in favor? Oh, I'll let the clerk do it.
Trustee Lujai.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
Trustee Winekoop.
Aye.
We have no presentations. And next up is the assessor. Hi Connie, can you tell us what's been going on over in the assessor's office?
Lots of things have been going on at the assessor's office.
Every time I'm at the township offices, I see a line, so tell us about that.
You've seen my written report, and during the time that we were open for appeals, my office processed over 1,500 assessed value complaints. That came through email requests, phone requests, and of course, walk-ins. We had just under 1,000 people walk into the office. And for a staff of three that worked very diligently, we also had someone working remotely to deal with the email requests, and we also instituted our intergovernmental agreement with Palatine Township who sent help to us. So we're very grateful to Palatine for their help, and certainly assure them that we will be sending help to them when they are open. One of the things I wanted to mention, and I don't do this very often, but considering the volume of people and how they were treated, I received this. Thank you so much. I know I say this every time I deal with the assessor's office. The assessor's office has the best government employees. If all government employees were like the assessor's office, government would be loved and honored. So I thought I would share that with you, because even though people are extremely anxious about the level of assessment they're seeing, they appreciate the advocacy that comes from the office. As to that, another thing crossed our paths three days before we closed, and various taxpayers brought this in and were, thought it came from us, and it certainly didn't. I'll pass these down so that you can take one and look at it. The front is a copy of the envelope, and it says Elk Grove Township, which leaves the recipient to believe that it came from my office. It most certainly did not. This is a solicitation letter by a for-profit company, and obviously, premeditatively, they are misrepresenting themselves as my office or a township office. I have contacted the Chief of Staff of the County Assessor to ask for assistance in this. Obviously, as a township, I don't have the budget to hire an attorney for a cease and desist, but they've got a legal staff at county that I would hope would assist. I also sent it to the President of the Cook County Township Assessors Association, because we're not going to be the only ones, only township, that's receiving this kind of fraudulent mailing. So just so you know what is going on there. Also, the question that we heard, even though we were dealing with assessed values, is why are my taxes so high? And if we took time for 1,500 people to explain, we wouldn't have time to do the work that we have to do with the time restraints that we have. But the first reason is obvious. Taxing bodies are levying to the max, right up to their caps. That's number one. Second of all, home rural communities have no tax caps, so they can level whatever they want, or levy whatever they want. And what concerns me greatly is mostly, and mostly is unreported, is Illinois 2021 Recapture Law, Section 18-233. The example I give you is if Elk Grove Township issued refunds within the past 12 months due to property tax appeal board decisions, court orders, certificates of error, of which we do many, those refunds amounts are automatically added to next year's tax levy by the Cook County Clerk, effectively with it going on, and it's been going on since 2021. This prior-year adjustment does not count against the property tax caps that are in place. This is over and above the caps. The result of this law in simple terms is that our taxpayers are paying for the mistakes of the Cook County Assessor. The taxing bodies love it because it's a windfall for them. They don't have to give the money back, but an onerous burden on our taxpayers. So when our constituents ask why taxes are so high, forcing many to think about leaving the state of Illinois, you now have a partial answer.
Thank you, Connie. I appreciate your passion. I'm so grateful that you did not just take this letter and share it with your staff, that you sent it on to see if somebody else can help, because this is going to impact all the surrounding townships as they get to the point that we just went through of appealing the reassessment. And this is very, very scary when, you know, it's delivered to your home, and it says Elk Grove Township Deadline, and it gives you the date, and inside there, there's a letter that really, really concerns you, and it makes it seem like you are dealing with the township. And you could be hiring these people, and they charge you a fee, and you don't even really realize it. And when people are scared, they make mistakes.
Absolutely. And the other thing is, it's not just those townships that are going to be open for the triennial reassessment, but again, I would anticipate we'd see something similar when we open for Board of Review.
Yes. So hopefully, somebody can scare them to stop doing this, because they're scaring a lot of our residents and taxpayers. Sue Ellen, what's going on with the clerk's office?
We're getting more FOAs these days. We had a couple this month. One of them was regarding applications and permits for a location called The Corner House in the township. The other was asking for our electronic records of purchase orders from 2020 until 2025. So Administrator Manzo got back to both of those people with the information. And then the other item is, the parade is next Friday, the 4th. Our application was accepted, and Mount Prospect will get back to us Wednesday or Thursday, giving us what number we're going to be in the parade and all the details. So somebody from the township will send that out to you when we get that. And if you are coming, and you're bringing family or friend, please let us know if you haven't let us know. And t-shirts are in. So get your green t-shirt. And that's it.
Thank you so much. And now for the supervisor's report. I think I mentioned it at the last, but it's worth mentioning again. The Food Pantry Locker grand opening was on May 17th, and it was attended by former Supervisor George Bussie, County Commissioner Kevin Morrison, and Illinois State Rep Michelle Musman. Monica was there as well. I attended. And so now we've put out a press release, and we're getting information out there. Lockers were great. Now we're going to get people to use them. I'm sure that they'll be very eager, but it takes a little bit of time to get the message out there. And many members of the board attended the Elk Grove Village Memorial Day Remembrance. It was a great opportunity to remember those who have fought for the freedoms that we have. And on June 5th, the Senior Walking Path had some seniors out there. It was a little bit lower attendance because of the smog, or the smoke that was coming from Canada. Also had a Fill the Truck Food Drive on June 14th, and that was put on by the Elk Grove Village Rotary Club in partnership with the FOP, Fraternal Order of Police for the Village of Elk Grove, and the Lions Club, and it was hosted at the Public Library from 9:00 to noon. I stopped by and saw the volunteers, and each of the organizations that I mentioned had volunteers there, and they were able to fill the township food truck. The back-to-school blast-off has kicked off, and so right now, we're, from June 16 to July 31, the township is collecting back-to-school supplies for students in need throughout the township. There's seven other collection sites other than the township. That information is being shared on social media. And the, this is done a little bit differently once we receive all of the school supplies. They're shared with the schools and the teachers directly, so that they can determine exactly who doesn't have a pen, who doesn't have a pencil, who needs folders. And so this is a really great way of doing it than opening up the doors and being able to give out as much as you can until we're out. This is the teacher seeing firsthand who needs school supplies. And then the Fight to Feed frozen donation. So on June 18th, we received a large donation of frozen foods and cheeses from Fight to Feed, totaling over 5,000 pounds of donations. And then on June 18th, bike and safety classes, the Open Ride. And one last thing I wanted to mention is that on June 17th, I, along with Administrator Manzo and Director of Social Services Cory Dewey, met with Illinois State Representative Nicole Grassi, her Chief of Staff and her Outreach Coordinator, and I gave them a tour of the township. We were together for a good two hours, and we talked about how they educated us a little bit about what's going on. Cory, you educated them a little bit of what's going on in Social Services, and we talked about ways that we can work together in the future. So it was a great meeting. Other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm sure that you've probably read in the newspaper, at least it was in one of the newspapers, that the Village of Elk Grove has formally annexed the Cemetery Road and the adjoining cemetery property via ordinance. The cemetery is on South Arlington Heights Road, just off of the 90, and so just adjacent to the highway, you'll see that there's a little cemetery there, and then there's a road. The road is owned by the township, or was owned by the township, and so they're now going to take care of that road, and they're going to obviously take care of the cemetery. Great thing about it is that we have an intergovernmental agreement for them, with them, related to snow removal services with the Elk Grove Village, and so we're going to be updating that to show lower cost for snow plumbing. We have a couple of positions that we're hiring for, and the front office still needs some volunteers. As you may recall, at the last meeting, we had approved the purchase of some new front desk furniture for the administrative area where we have the Eco Lane all set up, and also administrative services. So that furniture is scheduled to arrive on July 7th, so looking forward to that new furniture. You know, originally, we were going to build some offices up there, but we were going to block all the light that was coming in from outside, and this is more conducive to the staff working together, but giving them their space so that when they're on the phone, that residents that come in looking for service aren't trying to talk to people while they're on the phone as well. And then coming up on July 18th, from 12:00 to 4:00 is Passport Day with Congressman Rajah Christamorthi. And then the holiday programs will begin launching in July. Keep an eye out on social media and the upcoming township newsletter. The Thanksgiving Donation Drive, we're aiming for $14,000, which is the same as last year, and the goal is to distribute 1,000 Thanksgiving meals. And once again, we'll be doing the Older Adult Angel Tree and the Holiday Gift Drive for families. And that is my report. Anybody have any questions? All right, well, thank you. So we are going to move on. There are no correspondences.
You just have to approve the report.
Oh, you know what? We should approve those reports. Thank you, clerk. Can I get an approval for the monthly Township Elected Officials' Report?
I move to accept the monthly Township Elected Officials' Reports.
Trustee Stanyek, second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Winekoop.
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek.
Aye.
Trustee Dukes.
Aye.
Trustee Lujai.
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta.
Aye.
No correspondences, no old business, and now we're moving on to new business. I was asked about putting, about the township having a Pride Proclamation for the month of June by Trustee Monica, I'm going to say your name, I'm going to try it, Stanyek? Is that close enough?
Yeah, close enough.
All right, thank you. Close enough for government work. And so, you know, the last proclamation that was put together by the township was in 2014, so it's been a long time, and we really had no, we had a protocol, but no real policy. And so prior to adopting any proclamations, we really need to have a policy. One item I do want to mention to everybody, and I should have done it in my supervisor's report, when you go online now and you look at the agenda for our meeting, you're going to see that there's some hyperlinks that'll take you to the documents that we're reviewing tonight. And the next four business items, do you have those hyperlinks so you can actually read everything that we're talking about? And so that was in an effort to expand our transparency. So the first one is adopting, is Resolution 2025-12, Adopting a Policy on the Use and Approval of Proclamations. So the policy would be, whereas the Elk Grove Township Board is committed to providing a clear and consistent policies that align with its mission to improve the community, enhance the lives of every citizen through social service programs and taxpayer advocacy. And whereas the township issues proclamations on a limited basis as ceremonial statements to recognize individuals, notable events, or monumental causes directly connected township programs impacting Elk Grove Township residents. And whereas a formal policy has been developed to define the appropriate use, request, and approval process for proclamations in order to ensure transparency, mission alignment, and consistency. Whereas resolutions and ordinance remain governed by applicable provisions of the Illinois Township Code and do not require separate policy guidance, now therefore be it resolved by the Township Board of Elk Grove Township, Cook County, Illinois as follows. Adoption of policy, the Township Board hereby adopts the proclamation policy, a copy of which is attached here to Exhibit A and incorporates herein by references. Implementation, the township supervisor and township administrator are hereby authorized and directed to implement this policy and ensure that all future proclamations follow the procedures set forth within. Severability, if any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this resolution is held invalid, the invalidity shall not affect any other part of this resolution. Suppression, to the best of the township's knowledge, there is no existing formal policy governing proclamations. However, in the event that such policy does exist, this policy shall supersede and replace any prior proclamation policies previously drafted, approved, or implemented by the township. The effective date, this resolution shall be in force and effect upon its passage and approval as required by law. Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the Elk Grove Township Proclamation Policy?
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments?
I do have a comment. I would like to add a couple more passages to make this proclamation even more full, and I am ready to read those extra sentences.
Yes, I know what you're speaking of. Right now, we're talking about the policy first. We're going to do the other part.
Okay.
And three more items.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I do have one quick comment about the policy. I think it's a thoughtful, so I think there's lots of governmental bodies that make proclamations. I don't think that anything we're doing here is revolutionary. What I appreciate is the thoughtfulness about having a policy in place in order to make sure that not only any proclamation we might make tonight, but in the future, is thoughtful and considered, and is attached to the mission of the township. So I appreciate Supervisor taking the lead on articulating this policy and giving it to us for review. So if there's no other comments, I'm happy to move for its acceptance. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would also like to echo what Trustee Winekoop just said on the importance of a proclamation. And just for the public to know, in the actual proclamation policy, a proclamation may be requested by the township supervisor, any two township trustees, or the township administrator. So I appreciate the ability for trustees, the supervisor, and the administrator to be able to implement, or at least bring forward to a vote, future proclamation policies on that.
There's no other questions or comments? Would you like to make a motion?
I move to accept the Township Proclamation Policy.
Trustee Lujai, seconds.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Winekoop.
Aye.
Trustee Lujai. Trustee Lujai?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek?
Aye.
All right, next up is, so we have three more items. The Authorization to Award Contract for Sanitary Sewer Smoke Testing Services, Approval of Flooring Update for the Community Room, and then we will get to the Pride Proclamation, which is what you wanted to add some information to. So the Authorization to Award Contract for Sanitary Sewer Smoke Testing Services, so a recommendation from the Township Engineer has been included. So the township has several miles of sanitary sewer that we are responsible for, and we are required to do some smoke testing. And so you wonder what's smoke testing have to do with our sanitary sewers? So you hire a firm, and the firm comes out and they do smoke testing throughout the sanitary sewer system to make sure that there are no leaks in our system and that the sanitary sewer is not filling up with water that's not intended for that area, so that when there are storms, that we have plenty of capacity. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the materials that were provided for the smoke testing?
Yes.
Did anybody have any questions? We only received one bid, and our engineer said that it was a reasonable price for this testing. Nobody has any questions, can you please make a motion?
I move to accept the bid for the sanitary sewer system smoke testing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Weincoop?
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Lujai?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye. So in our last meeting, I believe during my supervisor's report, I talked about how the youth services area, when the township purchased this building and remodeled it, there was a recommendation for a flooring that was installed. And if you've ever been back there, it's very, very cushy, which is great because if any children fall down, or somebody gets pushed, or anything like that, any kind of horseplay, that you're less likely to get hurt. Unfortunately with this flooring, every time somebody walks on it, all the dirt from their shoes now shows up on that floor, and so the staff spends a considerable amount of time cleaning that floor so that it does not look like it's dirty. And so in an effort to make sure that we have a clean room for all the youth that visit the township, staff has requested that we replace, or put in a new floor over the existing floor. So it will be soft, but this one will be a little bit more manageable. There were three quotes that were received for this work. It's about 14, total area of 1,400 square feet of flooring footage. And while Luna Flooring submitted the lowest quote by about less than $100, after a thorough review of the materials, service history, and vendor responsiveness, Facility Manager Ramiro Ramirez and the Administrator Manzo have recommended selecting ProSource for the project. Does anybody have any questions regarding this item? Someone want to make a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion to approve?
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stanyek?
Aye.
Trustee Weincoop?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Lujai?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye. All right, and as previously mentioned, we just passed the resolution to adopt a policy on the use and approval for proclamations, and this was, was put together because of the request by Trustee Stanyek that we have a Pride Proclamation. I agreed with her that we could do a Pride Proclamation, which was, took just the two of us to get it onto the agenda, and I want to read the proclamation that was put together by staff. Proclamation 2025-01, proclaiming June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Elk Grove Township. Whereas Elk Grove Township, now to refer to as the Township, cherishes the value and dignity of every individual and recognizes the importance of equality, freedom, and human rights for all. Whereas the Township celebrates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and plus community, which enrich our shared experiences and strengthen the vibrancy of our community. And whereas the Elk Grove Township is committed to fostering a welcoming environment where all people, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are seen, valued, and supported by their neighbors, peers, and leaders. And whereas Pride Month offers an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the diversity that enhances our community and to affirm our ongoing commitment to inclusion, respect, and unity. Now therefore, I Township Supervisor John Scaletta, along with the Township Board of Trustees of Elk Grove Township, Cook County of Cook, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Elk Grove Township, and encourage all residents to celebrate the contributions of LGBTQ+ individuals and to continue promoting the values of inclusion, unity, and respect for all. Trustee Stanyek, you said that you had some comments about that?
Yes, I do. Let's try this again. I would like to add a couple more sentences to this proclamation, just to make sure that it's a full body of proclamation for our LGBTQ community. And those sentences will be as follows. Whereas in 2015, the Supreme Court of the United States affirmed the fundamental right to marriage guaranteed to same-sex couples. And whereas, in June 2020, the Supreme Court of the United States made one of the most consequential decisions on workplace discrimination in ruling that the Civil Rights Act of 1964 protects LGBTQ workers. And whereas, we must remain vigilant against continued oppression and discrimination against the LGBTQ community. And whereas, we affirm our support for LGBTQ residents in our community and stand with them to protect their civil rights and their ability to live openly and without fear. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any other, anything else to add, or any questions?
No, just a quick statement. As the first gay trustee in Elk Grove Township history, I very much appreciate your leadership and the leadership of this board, as well as the community in accepting or voting on LGBTQ+ Pride Month. This is a wonderful community to live in. I've only met really great people here, and I think this is an outward way of showing how accepting and wonderful the township is, as well as the people in it.
All right, does someone want to make a motion to amend the proclamation to include those following four items?
I motion to amend the proclamation to include the additional historical information.
Trustee Duke, second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Trustee Lujai?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek?
Aye.
Trustee Weincoop?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
All right, we're now at the point in our agenda for discussion and comments from Trustees. Is there anyone that wants to make any comments that are for the good of the township?
I would like to make a comment. As a proud member of the LGBTQ+ community, I am very grateful for today's LGBTQ proclamation. I believe that support and visibility like this not only empower our community, but in many cases can save lives. I know firsthand how much this matters, especially in times when LGBTQ+ community individuals are targeted and face discrimination. And with that in mind, I look forward to future conversations about adding a pride flag next year and continuing to fully embrace and uplift our LGBTQ+ community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Supervisor Scaletta, I have a question about order. Do we also need to approve the proclamation in the whole? Because I think we just approved adding those four.
Oh, well, that's, I, well, we can go back and do that. It was my intention, if you recall, when we had our group meeting, my intention was that, that we, that we make the motion on the amended proclamation, and then that would incorporate all of it, because with Robert's Rules of Orders, it gets confusing, because if we make a motion on the proclamation, and then someone makes an amendment, then you have to vote on the amendment, then you go back, and so I was, good point, but...
Okay, so we're good. I just want to make sure we don't lose track.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I sincerely do. And that's what I was trying to avoid, so thank you.
Wanted to make sure we don't lose track. And while I have the mic, I do want to mention that I think these sort of things, while ceremonial, are very important. I, you know, looking around, I don't know how many people here are old enough to remember the kind of discrimination that especially young people faced around their sexuality and gender expression. And when, earlier this evening, the Supervisor and Director Dorn were talking about the amount of youth services that we provide in the township, I think it's critical that we're sending messages to our youth that this is a place where they can do what youth do, which is explore their identity and sort through who they are and be able to express themselves. And I think that, you know, sometimes we talk about symbolism and that things are symbolic, and sometimes people will put a negative connotation on that and think about them as performative. But I can tell you just from a recent personal experience that it's not, that it means more to people than sometimes we think. My daughter was looking at colleges, we went and looked at a place that we'd never been, that she was, that she is going to go to school in the fall, and we were, we had some, you know, concerns about whether that was a community that was going to be supportive of everybody equally, and, you know, be the kind of place that we've enjoyed here, living in Mount Prospect and living in Elk Grove Township. And when we were, when we were there in that community, we saw many outward signs that people there are very accepting, you know, signs about gender and sexuality, and also about race and ethnicity and culture. And all those kind of outward signs to us said, you know, this is a place that we feel good about our child being for the next four years of her life. And so the more things that we do like that in the township, I think it helps everybody to feel seen and heard and appreciated and supported. And it does things, it makes the lives, I think, of our, the public servants in the township who run all these programs that make their lives easier, because it supports them showing that they work in an institution that is going to value every child that walks in here, every teenager that walks in here, and every resident that walks in here for all sorts of different kinds of services. So I think that these things are important, even if they're ceremonial or symbolic. And I'm kind of surprised that we haven't done more of this in the last 11 years, but I appreciate that we're proceeding in a thoughtful way about it this go-around. So thank you to everybody involved.
I'd like to make one quick comment as well. I'm really proud of the Board for going forward with this. You know, LGBTQ youth are among by far the highest at risk when it comes to suicide and depression. So being consistent with our mission as a social service provider, it's imperative that we do this, you know? In the military and in the labor force and in the trades and even in schools, we're seeing these rollbacks of access. And it's crazy to think that right now, in a lot of places, people of the LGBTQ+ community have had less access now than they did five years ago. They have less access now than they did 10 years ago. And so, I'm just really proud of this Board. It's imperative that we explicitly state that this is a place where we welcome all in the township.
Final comment, and maybe this is a question for the Supervisor. When it comes to creating a new policy on a flying different flags, as well as creating a new flagpole, would it be your vision to maybe create a committee from the community or to amend rules on flying different flags throughout the year overall, or is that a conversation for future meetings or times?
Okay. So I wanted to clarify a couple of things, just so that we're all on the same page. You had mentioned moving forward with this, and we're not moving forward with flying any flags at this point.
Not the flag, the proclamation.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So tonight's discussion, Trustee Stanyek brought it up to me several weeks ago, and in order for it to be on the agenda so that we could take action, I needed someone else to contact me to say that they wanted to put it on the agenda. I didn't hear that. So tonight's conversation is just that, a conversation, but if we want to discuss it at the next board meeting, we can do so, and what would happen at that meeting is everyone would give their opinion, there would be a vote to direct staff to put together a policy based on the conversation that we have. Great. Thank you. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
One more quick question regarding the proclamation.
Sure.
So there's only a handful of days left in June 2025. This proclamation is explicitly for June 2025, correct?
This one is, correct. That's why, like, you'll, I'm sorry, finish.
Oh, I was just, for June 2026, if we were to recognize Pride Month again, we'd have to do a new proclamation.
Correct. And it was great that Trustee Stanyek wanted to add additional things to it, but realize, if we do this every year, we kind of want to change it up a little bit. And so we're kind of putting everything into one proclamation, and so next year, we're going to have to find other ways to express ourselves, or else we'll be issuing the same proclamation. And that's why, because I studied other, I mean, I was on the Village Board of Arlington Heights for 16 years, and we did proclamations on a regular basis, and every year, you need to kind of freshen it up a little bit, so that it's not stale and you're not just saying the same thing. And that's why I think that the original proclamation really capsulized everything that we wanted to express, but I appreciate you bringing forward additional things, and I'm not going to vote no or challenge you on adding those, just because next year, it's going to be a little bit harder for us to put something together. Staff is up to the challenge. All right?
My, one last quick comment from myself. I just wanted to give a big shout out to the Transportation Department. Whenever I'm driving around Elk Grove Township, I always see them out and about with their buses, moving people around. I always wave. I've had great conversations in the community with the staff as well. They're doing a top-notch job and just absolutely fantastic, and I had the pleasure of joining on the Senior Walk last month, and it was just a wonderful time. We have a really great staff here that works great with the community and goes out of their way to provide extra services with a really great smile, and it's something I notice now that I'm looking for, but I see those buses everywhere, and those workers, those drivers are a really great addition, as well as the staff that sends them out. So I always love to give kudos when I see it.
Thank you. We'll pass that along.
Agreed.
I'd love to hear that.
I absolutely do.
Are there any other comments or questions? So we are going to close up the, the opportunity for discussion and comments from the Board. And now, we're, the Administrator is requesting closed session per 5 ILCS 120/2 C1, Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the Public Body or Legal Counsel, and 5 ILCS 120/2 C21, Discussion of Minutes Lawfully Closed, whether for the purpose of approval of the minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Trustee Lujai motions to go into closed session.
Trustee Stanyek, seconds. We're adjourning and going into closed session.
We're, we're going into closed session, will return back out here to adjourn, correct?
I think we have to adjourn this meeting to go into...
Going to that one.
Stanyek, okay.
All right, so let me say this. That's how we always did it in the Village of Arlington Heights. What I saw being done here was that in case there was ever something that went on in the closed session, I don't anticipate anything coming out of closed session that we are going to come out here and vote on, but I'm happy to adjourn the meeting after the executive closed session. What's the will of the Board?
I would agree with you. I would keep the meeting open until we come back and adjourn officially after our closed session. That's how I've run meetings as well.
Okay. So do I have a motion to go into executive closed session?
Trustee Lujai motions to go into closed session.
Trustee Stanyek, seconds.
All right, roll call? All right. Roll call?
Trustee Lujai?
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek?
Aye.
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Weincoop?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye. So we are going to go into closed session. Should be in there for about 10, 15 minutes. We're going to come back here, adjourn the meeting officially. Thank you to our lone residents who stayed the time with us. Closed session is complete. The Board has nothing to report out. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Elk Grove Township Board meeting dated June 23rd, 2025?
Trustee Duke's motion to adjourn.
Trustee Lujai, seconds. Roll call?
Trustee Dukes?
Aye.
Trustee Lujai?
Aye.
Trustee Stanyek?
Aye.
Trustee Weincoop?
Aye.
Supervisor Scaletta?
Aye.
All right. That's it. Thanks for joining us.